All right, welcome to the City Council Work Session. It is November 3rd, 6:05 PM. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh is absent. Council President Dundon is absent. Councilmember Rathmel?
Present.
Councilmember Matavetsky?
Present.
Council President Pro Tem Potchkas?
Present.
Thank you.
All right, so we don't have a quorum, but I think I want to move forward and just introduce this legislation for the folks that are here. We're going to start with RL 25-173 in ordinance to in Public Works and Parks. It's a resident submitted, Richard Chinaccio. If you want to come down. Yep, right there. Yep. You just press it once. So this is RL 25-173, an ordinance resolving blue bag issues and implementing a three-state stream solid waste disposal system. This is submitted by a resident and do you want to give us an overview of your proposal?
Yes, good evening, Richard Chinaccio. Senator Southside. And breaking. That's good, okay. I am proposing a three-stream system because when you look at the effects of it, it's the best solution, I believe, for the blue bag issue. This system that I propose is a modification of a system that the EPA promotes, and it's one that's been in place in San Francisco for many years. Recently, New York City has developed a three-stream system, and New York State law is such that it encourages such a system, which the third stream, of course, is composting. We now have garbage that goes to the landfill, which is a mixture of biodegradable food scraps and so on, as well as non-biodegradable things like broken coffee mugs and things from the house that we discard. And that all goes to the landfill and the city has to pay tipping fees. This system would separate the biodegradables, and only the remaining non-biodegradables would go to the landfill. So you have less and therefore saving on tipping fees. It also saves the residents because they don't need to use as many bags or as large bags. So it saves both the residents and the city money. And if the city constructs a compost facility, it can have one close by so that even the yard waste, which now goes all the way to Appalachian, can go closer, and the compost food scraps and things can go there as well. New York State law provides that, starting January of 2026, which, of course, we're not going to have it in effect that time, but starting in January of 2026, any generator of biomass waste within 50 miles, if that waste exceeds one ton per week, must bring it to the composting facility if one exists within 50-mile radius. So right away, the city would have extra customers, and these customers would have to pay the city tipping fees. The city would now be collecting tipping fees instead of paying it to the county. So it's a good financial situation. An obvious customer would be Binghamton University, probably our hospitals, and so on and so forth. The tipping fees for composting are usually lower than they are for dumping in landfill, so even smaller dumpers might want to bring their biodegradables for that reason alone. So at the same time, we want to keep the blue bags. We're not saying get rid of the blue bags. We're saying reduce their usage for only the things that need to go to the landfill that are not compostable. And the blue bags do have their problems. I think the problems can be solved. We can get revenue from this eventually and use it to pay for bags. They should be provided free, I believe, for anybody that's on SNAP because they can't afford to put food on the table. They can't afford to buy bags to throw away their garbage, especially at the premium prices that are really used to pay those tipping fees. So I think that can be done, and they can be made stronger. We had stronger bags when I first moved here eight years ago. And I found out that they changed vendors, and that's probably why they're not as good as they used to be. But certainly, we can do that. We might have to encourage more places to carry the bags because right now, they don't make any kind of a profit or anything on them, and maybe we have to give them a little incentive to delegate their their shelf space to the bags. In some cases, especially a small store like a bodega or something like that, deli, they don't have the space. Or, you know, give them some kind of an incentive or reward for doing it. So that's basically what it comes down to. The biggest benefit also is that it's good for the environment. I mean, it cuts down on the methane gas, which is 80 times more destructive per molecule as a greenhouse gas. And that's why I think that it's something that we should move forward to. I don't think it's going to happen overnight. I'm suggesting that we phase it in over a three-to-five-year period, starting with an engineering study to give us options on citing for the compost facility and the different technologies that can be used, and whether the city wants to use its own workforce or contract it out. I mean, a lot of decisions would have to be made. And it starts with a serious look at it, but I think this is the way to go. In terms of feasibility, I have found that it's not just large cities that, like New York City and San Francisco, that have done this, but even smaller cities the size of Binghamton, or even 25,000 population in Connecticut and some of the New England states. The this system, the three-stream system, tends to be clustered in states that encourage it. New York now has this law that encourages it. So you're not going to find it in Kansas, but you're going to find it in California, you'll find it in New York, find it in Connecticut, and you'll find it in a handful of states. That's basically it, and I think this type of project is closely aligned with the Department of Public Works. It's closely aligned with Parks Department, and I think that the city does an outstanding job in both of those departments. So that's why I think the city is going to be able to pull this off.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think in, in, in general, I am supportive of having the city support having a compost municipal waste, waste stream and like processing that. But then I kind of always get lost in the logistics of that and kind of where to begin, and like you said, there's, it's not something that's going to happen overnight, but thank you. Thank you for bringing this forward. And I think there are some efforts throughout the city to do more, more composting, kind of on like a neighborhood level.
Oh, yes.
There's like through vines and a few other, I can't remember all the other organizations.
CCE.
CCE. So yeah, I think everybody is kind of moving in this direction and yeah. So thank you.
There was also a survey in Boom County. Ninety-one percent of the population favored composting or willing to participate in it.
That's a good number.
It is a very good number.
Does anybody have anything else for Richard?
I think when you talked about this, so the South Side Neighborhood Assembly, you talked about the idea of the compost day being the same as the yard waste day and not adding additional trucks for this. Is that, that was how you were seeing it, or?
Yeah.
Is that something that you've had conversations with, that that is possible, or? Well, before.
If you, if you think, think of it in terms of along the lines of what we have now, we have they make for the regular garbage in the blue bags, and then they make another trip for the recyclables, right? Before we had recycling, all of that would have been in one big pile, so they wouldn't have been able to get to as many blocks before they had to dump the truck out. And it's the same here. Instead of two piles, we're going to have three piles, but those three piles are going to be smaller. So they'll be able to get to more households before they have to go to deposit it wherever they're going to deposit it. And since the garden waste and the food scraps are going to go to the same place, it kind of makes sense that they might be picked up the same day.
I just want to thank you for the research that you've done to put this proposal together, as well as the advocacy on the Commission for the Conservation of the Environment that you really upheld it when proposing this as a stream for consideration. I do want to represent, just so other members know, that the, which is something that I've reported on at most meetings, but the Commission for the Conservation of the Environment over the last several months has taken up the issue of blue bags in particular. And so there was a collective proposal of recommendations that was submitted somewhat simultaneously. And Richard was very involved in that conversation as well, provided a good bit of the research. From, I think what I would love to see in considering this approach is also, I know most members haven't had a chance to digest or even review the collective recommendations from the Commission for the Conservation of the Environment. I will represent that while the three, and I just want to read specifically from those recommendations, while the three
They call it three bin.
Thank you.
Instead of three stream, but
Was, was generally supported again because of its incorporation of a broader compost approach. The concern at the commission level was just the means of the city at the moment, and the likelihood that a partnership with the county in moving forward, that kind of a system for compost would likely result in a more effective approach. So the commission recommended, and Richard, you use the term phasing in composting, but there was discussion around postponing that compost component as we review how effective the implementation of the partnership between the city and Vines and CCE to support composting. Just the opportunity to look at those outcomes, since it has not yet been implemented for for a year. So that, those recommendations exist as well. I think they're all worth considering, and I think we're planning to hear either Wednesday's business meeting or another upcoming session from the Chair of the Commission on their recommendations as well.
Well, yes, as I was talking to Julie before the meeting here, this all started a year ago. Somebody from the West Side put in a proposal with one sentence, like, just get rid of the blue bags, right? And then it came to the commission, so this proposal can also go to the commission. I mean, this is not an expedited thing, you know, we can, it can go to the commission and then come back with a recommendation. It, according to my understanding of the city charter, it goes both ways. The commission can initiate topics and also take things that the council needs to have an opinion on that have been presented to it. So we get to the right conclusion. That's what counts, right?
I'm curious to learn a little bit more about some of those smaller cities that have implemented and what that looks like, what's, how do we have any sense of what their timeline was for implementation?
That's a very good question. I, I found out that they generally do it within a three-to period, and that's why I gave that figure. I didn't make it up. But I also found that the ones that don't thrive are the ones that are small, like just doing their own little city. And, but New York has given us the opportunity to get customers. In fact, they'd be mandated to bring it to the Binghamton compost facility. If, and you know, right now, it's two tons within a 25-mile radius, and in January of 2026, it goes to one ton or more, or more within a 50-mile radius. And like I said, the smaller entities might do it just because it's cheaper than bringing it to the landfill, unless so. And of course, you know, people feel good about doing good things for the environment, too.
Are there any other takeaways from the smaller cities?
Yes, that's so to be financially viable, the ones that are not thriving very well is because they're too small, just their own city, so it's almost essential to a, to a large enough scale where you make it worthwhile to hire the people to run and manage it and, you know, get, get a little profit from the tipping fees to be able to run the program and subsidize the bags for the people that can't afford them.
Anything else? Sure.
Yeah, I think Rebecca and Richard have said it all. I think the proposal
Hey, hey, you gotta, you gotta use the mic. So this is, Julian Shepherd is the Chair of the Commission for the Conservation of the Environment.
Um, yeah, I just say that I think the proposal is very good. It just isn't really quite timely. It hasn't been presented in this form to the commission, and that's sort of our work, is to look through these sort of things and answer the type of questions that Hadassah has asked. So what I would say is we will do that. I would just add that I think I am slated to talk to you briefly on Wednesday, just about what I submitted to you guys a week and a half, two weeks and a half ago. Just our, our, the results of our sort of fairly extensive consideration of the issue. So. Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, next on our agenda is RL 25-167, Considered in Finance, with Councilmember Kavanaugh, and our presenter is Fire Chief Al Gardner.
This is an ordinance to amend the 2025 fire budget to adjust for budget shortfalls. And the lines that need to be adjusted are vehicle parts and repairs, incentive pay for paramedic trainings, the stipend, uniforms, and electricity. Electricity was, was the largest expenditure. Comp controller did the transfer funds, but can I answer any questions that you, to have?
Sure, Kev. And all the fund balance in this regard is the fire department fund balance, not general, correct?
No, 84999 is the general fund balance, balance. It's not a separate.
What, what was the driver for the, the vehicle parts? What was the big expense there?
The big, big expense was we had a, an engine, a failure. And that's the, that's a, it was just finished, but we had actually transferred 30,000 earlier. But in the meantime, it took about a month to repair that engine, but in the meantime, we had some other major repairs in our tower. First fuel injectors, it was, you know, it's $8,000. And so the money kept being spent, and consequently, we've been struggling with this budget line this year. We've had, taken a lot of hits.
There was one, was there a, a cable system or something on one of the ladder trucks?
Yeah, earlier, yeah, yep. And it was fuel injectors on the tower. I think there was four of them. It was like seven, $8,000.
So, and then as far as the incentive pay and training, do we just have more people sign up to paramedic classes than we anticipated, or?
Yeah, what, what happened? We had the firefighter that was struggling. And, you know, they graduate like in September, and he was having problems with the final exam. So he kept, he repeated a few times. Then he had some remedial training, so it kind of got into the following year. So we, that stipend, if you read the contract, there's no timeline on it, just when they, when they when they complete the training, they, they get the stipend and consequently, there was five instead of four.
Okay.
What? Oh, so for next year, we think that in our budget, we'll have the appropriate amount for incentive pay, paramedic training stipend.
Uh, no, no, it should, it should be, we should be good next year. Barring any similar problems. I've never seen this before, but first time for everything, I guess, but. Uniforms, I think I mentioned this before at one of the previous meetings, but we didn't use a lot of promotions this year. And I think I, I told you, I had to buy three sets of badges for lieutenants, and they were over $1,000. So we had, we had many promotions this year, and it just stretched our budget.
I don't have anything else.
Me neither.
I think, I mean, it'd be great to have
For expedition.
Oh, sure. Oh, so does anybody want to make a motion to expedite?
I can make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion to second. The clerk take the roll.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh?
Hi.
Councilmember Dundon is absent. Councilmember Rathmel?
Hi.
Councilmember Matavetsky? Council President Pro Tem Potchkas?
Hi.
Thank you. That was four zero.
I think you're still with us, Chief, right?
Yep, yep. Thank you for expediting that, by the way. Yep.
No problem. Next is RL 25-172, Considered in Finance. And our presenter is Al Gardner, and this is an ordinance to accept a federal U.S. Department of Homeland Security 2024 AFG grant.
Can you give us an overview of the, the grant and what it's going to be used for?
Sure.
Have a small local match, I think, yeah.
Yes, we do. So it's secure funding for needed turnout gear. The grant funding totals about, let's see, 350,000, 1,040 dollars. As a condition of the grant, the city is required to pay 10%, which is 31,830.91 cents. So we have, this is basically for about 57 sets of turnout gear. Now, the grant was originally written for, in with this year's firefighter class in, in mind. So we had 22 sets for the probationary firefighters and 38, or 35 sets for firefighters that are currently on the line. So we're, we're going to still use it for the same purpose, you know, we'll, we'll go out and we'll hopefully purchase 35 sets for the current firefighters and and we'll be able to, we're probably going to have 15, 16 firefighters this, next year in the in the probationary class. So that, that'll work out, but we were awarded the grant very late. Not sure why, but it was very timely.
So this is in addition to the other grant, right?
Which, which grant's that?
Is there, was there another grant for 100 and some thousand?
The initial ask for the turnout gear was 141K, but the grant to cover it is this one. When the
Is that right? There's not, there's only one grant?
There's only one grant, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Sorry. Okay. But we suddenly got two grants, all right?
That'd be nice, but.
And then our local match will be easily, well, I let's see. So we're pulling this from fund balance because we're doing it this year. Whereas we have that, we have that capital line built in starting next year.
Next year.
But we don't have that available to draw on now.
Correct. So this, this is kind of nice because we can start, at least getting the firefighters measured up now. And we won't need to struggle with the probationary firefighters like we do every year. So the performance period, I think it's until September 2027, but I'm sure we will purchase all this equipment by the fall of this year, or sooner.
Would there be a way, and this would just be a budget question, so it might be more of a
Chuck question?
Well, we'll see. Is there, since we know that that 100,000 was set aside specifically for turnout gear, is there a way to reimburse the fund balance for that match out of that line?
Yeah. I wouldn't know. It'd be a
I don't know if it makes sense. I'm just curious if it's a
That plot doesn't exist until January 1st. I mean, how much of this is going to get ordered before just end of December?
I, I would say we're going to start, yeah. Yeah.
Anything else?
This one isn't marked for expedition.
No, no, it's not.
Sounds like you want to move pretty quickly on the purchase.
We, yeah, we, yeah, we'll move, you know, I didn't see this as an immediate need for expedition. I didn't want to burden you with that, and we're kind of pressed on this, the repairs for the apparatus.
Okay. I don't have anything else at the moment.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chief.
All right, now we have, we can move on to RL 25-168. This is in Planning with Councilmember Rathmel, and the presenter is Dr. Juliet Berlin, the Director of Planning.
Thank you. This is RL 25-168, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with EDR, who is the Environmental Design and Research Landscape Architecture Engineering and Environmental Services, DPC, for additional professional services. Dr. Berlin, could you give us some context, please?
Absolutely. They're the contractors that are running the program, the carousel restoration and renovation and relocation. So when I came back and asked for the 100,000, this was covered under it. And engineering and I didn't realize that we hadn't brought this to council yet. So we're doing it now. This is pretty much just an extenuation of their original contract terms with some additional duties. And it's not to exceed the Um, and it's not to exceed the forty thousand. Um, they did give us a, uh, an hourly rate list. And, um, I don't believe they'll go over that.
So this isn't money, this isn't new money that we're spending. It's already been allocated in the previous RL. It's just broken out into two different.
Yes.
Okay. And it seems like that project's moving forward.
Yep.
That's great news.
Yeah.
Great news.
I'm motion expedite.
I'll second.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Uh, will the clerk take the role, please?
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council President Dundon is absent. Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Berlin.
Next, we have, um, RL twenty-five dash one sixty-nine.
But not Sarah Gloss.
Yeah, but not Sarah Gloss, and we don't have, uh, Councilmember Middleton. You guys, I look at my cheat sheet.
An MPA.
Okay. So we'll, we'll give it to, uh, Councilmember Matavetsky and our presenter is Ben.
Thank you. Great. Um, so please give us an overview of RL twenty-five dash one sixty-nine, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of a tree donation from Sunny Hill Tree Farm.
Okay, so this is, um, basically the same thing as what we did last year, uh, for the holiday tree lighting. Um, so this one, this RL is for the, uh, the tree that we're going to be getting from Sunny Hill Tree Farm. They're over in Endwell. Uh, same folks that gave us the tree last year, uh, valued at three hundred dollars. And, um, we're just requesting expedition on this, um, just so that we can get everything all set in time for, uh, the holidays.
Uh, let's see, I'm trying to remember, last year, I think there was a sponsor for the lighting. I think it was Greenlight. Uh, do you have sponsors again for the additional costs of the Christmas tree? Oh.
Yeah, there, these RLs are, uh, kind of go hand in hand. Yes, so that one is, um, Greenlight Networks is going to be the sponsor for this. Uh, they were the sponsor last year. Um, so they're going to be, uh, paying for the lights that are going on the tree. It's valued at one thousand twenty-six dollars. Um, exactly the same price as last year. And then, um, we do just have one change for this. So they just notified me today. They were, they were originally planning to partner with WICZ on this, um, but they're now looking to, uh, they're gonna shop it around to the other media outlets. Um, I'm not sure what, what exactly happened with WICZ. I think they may still be on the table, but they're, they're looking at all of them right now. But definitely the, uh, the total value of it shouldn't exceed five thousand.
Thank you.
I don't, I don't remember there being a tree donated. I remember the tree being there, but I don't remember it being a donate, donation. Is that, did we buy it last year and then this?
No, I, it was donated last year. Yeah, they have, um, they, they actually have three trees. Um, we took one last year and then this one for this year, and they've got another one for us next year. Basically, all they asked was, uh, just to be recognized, uh, for being the one to donate the tree, and we'll try and get them on the banner that goes around the tree.
So if this has been set up and is in fact already set up for next year, why didn't the RLs come down a little bit sooner so they didn't have to be expedited?
Sure, and that's a good question. Um, it was really just that we were working with Greenlight on ironing out the details. Um, they had a new uh, staff member that was going to be the lead on this from there. And so we, we've just been kind of working out those details over the last couple of weeks.
All right.
Anyone else that's ever come forward to offer onto these, um, offer these types of arrangements, um, that were considered behind the scenes?
No, no one, uh, not to my knowledge. I think things went really well last year. Um, and, and both those partners were eager to do it again. So that's what we're looking to do.
If anyone else in the committee wants to step up, though, the wreaths that are looking very nice could use some nice bows on them, though. Really give them a complete look. If anyone wants to donate bows for the wreaths downtown, I think we can make that happen.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Uh, well. Anyone else? Oh.
No, I just, I, I have already decorated for Christmas, and so in the holiday spirit, I'm happy to motion to expedite.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we got a motion.
Um, first, we'll do each, so the first one first.
Yeah.
Motion in second for the first one.
Clerk take the role.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council President Dundon is absent. Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is four zero.
Motion expedite RL twenty-five one seventy.
Second.
Motion in second. Will the clerk take the role, please?
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council President Dundon is absent. Councilmember Rathmel and Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is four zero.
Thank you.
Do.
You know the.
Where did, I know the tree was put in a park, but I don't know which park it was put in.
Um, I'm not sure about that.
Where was it? Yeah, it was there, but then they, they put it in a park because it was dug up by the roots. It wasn't, it wasn't cut. It's like a, the whole root ball was there.
I didn't know that.
I, I'm not sure. I wasn't, I wasn't with the city at that point, but I can look into it and shoot you an email.
Thank you so much. Of course.
I, I was gonna ask if we know if the fire department's gonna do the Hanukkah drop again downtown this year?
Uh, that's another good question. I, I, I'm not sure. I can find out about that as well.
Thank you.
What's the Hanukkah drop?
They do like Hanukkah gelt parachuted out of the top of the, um, one of the fired ladder, like, you know, way up in the air, and the kids run and get the Hanukkah gelt as it's coming down. It was very, very cool.
Well, so you got another one here.
Yes.
So we got RL twenty-five dash one seventy-one, considered in municipal public affairs with Councilmember Matavetsky. And then Ben is our presenter again, and this is another one that you're semi-familiar with presenting on.
Yes. Um, so this is a resolution authorizing free parking at all the municipal ramps on, uh, November twenty-ninth, December sixth, thirteenth, and twentieth. Um, so this will be for Water Street, State Street, Holly Street, and Collier Street. Um, just one important note difference from when I was down here for the July free parking, this will not include, uh, on-street parking.
The argument for the July parking was that it is a, a lope shopping season and that, um, the parking garages are being underused at that point. Um, and therefore, the amount of money we'd be missing out on would be low.
Sure.
Um, this is kind of the opposite philosophical argument of trying to generate revenue to downtown businesses through encouraging people to come and shop during the busy season. How much money do we usually bring in?
So, um, for, for the month of December, the parking in the garages, uh, averaged one thousand three hundred dollars per week. Um, so across four, four weeks, that'd be five thousand two hundred.
Is this, um, kind of backed by popular demand?
Yeah, I actually, if, uh, if anyone's interested, we, we did do a survey after the July parking. Um, we, we got seventeen responses. Uh, every person was interested in doing this again. There, there was one person that was neutral on it. No one was opposed to, uh, doing free parking again. I can share this.
And was it from business owners or just people that were happening to be out that day? Okay.
So, um, I guess I'm always interested in opportunity costs. So, uh, we're looking at five thousand two hundred dollars. Is there anything similar of that, of that value that we're aware that downtown businesses want, for example?
Well, that's a good question.
Because that's, that to me, in terms of a survey, would be more beneficial than, um, nothing or something for free.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Um, to get a, a sense of priorities.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know of one specific thing that they would want that set that value, but, um, I've heard from, from various businesses just in my outreach downtown um, that they had, they really liked the July free parking, that it was really effective for them, and a lot of them have mentioned that they think it would be beneficial to their businesses to bring it back, uh, for these few weeks before the holidays.
One note on this RL is that I think states, the State Street ramp was inadvertently included.
Hmm, no, we put that on there actually because, uh, just to make it simple for people, if, if circumstances change with the State Street garage before then, then we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. But, and, um, as well as we, we won't really be advertising the State Street garage. The goal is to push people to the other locations.
Will there be efforts during the free parking to convert people to, uh, becoming paid parking ramp users or is there any other outreach that will?
Um, that, that wasn't really something that I had thought about. Um, but we definitely want to promote this. That was, that was something that we heard from folks last time was that, uh, they felt there maybe could have been more promotion. There were, there were some customers that maybe didn't know that there was free parking. Um, so we'll just try and boost those efforts even more this time.
We have free bicycle parking in the ramp. I just keep in mind. Not only be cold, get cold by then.
Always free. No one charges for bike.
We have nice covered, uh, free bike, bike parking.
No, I don't have anything else. Is there, is there a motion to expedite? The motion, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Motion in second. Will the clerk please take the role? Oh.
Councilmember Murray is absent. Councilmember Middleton is absent. Councilmember Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Council President Dundon is absent. Councilmember Rathmel.
Aye.
Councilmember Matavetsky.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Thank you. That is four zero.
Thank you. And our last RL of the evening is RL twenty-five dash one seventy-four. Uh, considering in planning. I'm gonna have a council member, Kavanaugh be the chair, and the presenter is Councilmember Rathmel.
Okay, I'd like to introduce RL twenty-five one seventy-four, an ordinance to authorize the sale of city-owned property to Forty-two Fayette Street to Paul Siderski for five hundred dollars. And we have Councilmember Rathmel, who is presenting this RL, which she has returned.
Thank you. Uh, and I know I do want to represent that uh, Council President Mike Dundon was heavily involved in conversations leading up to this introduction as well and had hoped to be a part of conversation. Um, there are a number of variables that I'll touch on, uh, kind of at the end of this initial presentation relative to moving it to committee conversations. There's not an immediate request for expedition, but this is something that council members, several council members have been working on since about this time last year. Uh, when an initial offer to purchase landed on a work session agenda, uh, mid-November twenty twenty-four. Uh, at the end of last year and the beginning of twenty twenty-five, uh, myself, Councilmember Hotchkiss, Council President Dundon had a number of conversations with Paul Siderski, who's named in, uh, this ordinance. Uh, he is the current tenant at Forty-two Fayette Street. He has resided there for almost five years, but was a tenant of the former owner, Isaac Anzouroots, uh, for several years prior to that. When a previous building that he rented from Anzouroot was condemned, forcing his relocation. That was the second instance of forced relocation that he experienced, having previously rented from another slumlord who has passed, so I will not name him, um, after the condemnation of that building. So for the better part of a decade, Mr. Siderski has been forced to relocate, forced to move his home at no fault of his own and consistently demonstrated the capacity to maintain rent. With Forty-two Fayette in particular, when we had conversations late last year and early this year with Mr. Siderski, uh, we learned and he had several receipts to provide evidence of the thousands of dollars that he has invested in the maintenance of the property. Um, that included replacing the furnace, resolving delinquent water bills, repairing utility equipment and maintaining the grounds. Those are still investments that he has maintained and has communicated a commitment to continue to maintain. Um, he submitted an offer to purchase last year. This introduction this evening is a representation of his continued interest in assuming ownership as well as his continued commitment to the maintenance of the property as needed. Um, he has, over the last couple of months, although there is an ongoing eviction case against him, which is not the, the topic of current discussion, but despite the uncertainty and the impact to his mental health of that case, he has pursued and completed first-time homebuyers program with Metro Interfaith. He has received, uh, financial counseling regarding what it would take in terms of maintaining financial responsibility for the home. Again, uh, he has receipts dating back through the duration of his tenancy, representing his, um, capacity to have consistently paid rent and taking care of maintenance issues when the former property owner wasn't able to. Um, the amount at five hundred is at five hundred dollars, I think, is represented specifically for two reasons. One, it is double the amount that was introduced by the mayor's office last November as an acceptable offer for the purchase of Forty-two Fayette by uh, a different interested developer. Uh, but also, I think that five hundred dollar amount, he has, again, already invested thousands of dollars and will be committed to continuing to invest thousands of dollars in the maintenance of the property. Um, he has had multiple conversations, not only with veteran service organizations, uh, but other funding up, uh, procurement and funding agencies for the renovations and repair that will be needed. And the only thing standing in between him and submitting applications for that funding is actual ownership. The variables that I would point out, uh, that come to mind, uh, typically in a real estate transaction, the seller is responsible for renovations prior to transfer of ownership. I think this is a unique situation. Um, I did start, I had started some conversation with the city's previous HUD manager around the use of CDBG funding for some of those necessary improvements, given the, the how the property was acquired by the city. Um, I did not get clarification before our, our HUD manager left. Uh, so I've reached out to a colleague in the sector just with CDBG expertise to see if that is an option uh, prior to a transfer of ownership. So I think that's a continued conversation. There was one other piece that was a variable that I'm not remembering at the moment, but happy to discuss comments, questions, otherwise.
Right. I don't have, I mean, I, I also met with Paul and reviewed some of the, the steps he's taken to, um, secure funding. Um, so I I think he can, I think he can get there and like make this happen and, um, turn this into a home that also is, uh, aesthetically pleasing and functional and safe. So hey, I am supportive of this, and I think he can, he's gonna be able to leverage some of the other groups and organizations that can help him out with a project. So I don't, I don't really have anything else in regards to this right now.
It'd be great to keep someone housed.
Yes, it would. It'd be great to keep someone housed.
So that specifically, I did ask Mr. Siderski if there was anything specific. So that specifically, I did ask Mr. Sadowski if there was anything specific that he would like represented this evening, other than I do have an offer to purchase, uh, that he submitted typically that would go to the mayor's office, he wasn't comfortable submitting it to the mayor's office, given the ongoing eviction case. Um, he has also been advised by council not to, by his council not to make uh, any public statements or engage in kind of public discourse, given the ongoing eviction case. But he very specifically wanted me to share his thanks to everyone on council for helping him stay in his home.
It's completely, completely unrelated, but I had one conversation today with a landlord that was in favor of, um, investing in rehabilitation of places rather than demolitions, so. Completely unrelated.
Sometimes when we do grant stuff with other developers, I know this, this gentleman isn't a developer, but when we've had these types of sale things with developer developers, um, there's been like, uh, like a clawback kind of thing that says like if you can't secure this funding to make this work, then we can take it, but, I mean, um, is, is that something that's being considered? Because it sounds like basically similar to all those other grants that, um, developers with grant opportunities that have come before us, they need site ownership in order to go for the grant.
Right.
And then it's not a guaranteed situation and then the city has been able, I, I'm just spitballing.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think that's unreasonable, neither does Mr. Sadowski, there, I mean, the in discussion, I think outlining a responsible timeline for those renovations, um, so that he is not then just belabored by, I mean, we don't want to see him end up in code court. I think the fact that we've owned the property for over a year now, but have not moved forward in making any renovations, uh, is personally frustrating to me because he's already dealt with multiple landlords in the last decade plus that have not invested in ensuring the safety of the property in which he resided. And since the city took ownership, there's been no effort to invest similarly. Uh, I would love to see a C D B G option so that it doesn't fall entirely, uh, on him. Um, but the, you know, I think there's a way to support his interest, affirm collectively that displacement and demolition is not a responsible redevelopment strategy. I mean, one of the things that I believe I've pointed out in the past is there are, none of us have denied the deficiencies of the property when it comes to, uh, code violations. But the, there are dozens of properties in the city that have similar deficiencies and just forcing families or individuals out and knocking them all down is not a solution and shouldn't be considered to be a solution, so every opportunity we have to, to rehabilitate and retain, prevent the displacement of one more individual into our homeless services system, I think is one worth pursuing.
Thank you, is there anything else? Alright, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.
Thank you.